All right, thank you for being here. This is our last of our show. Live Town Hall meetings is being recorded via Zoom, so we are going to go through the full presentation. For those who haven't seen it yet, and also so we can get it out to everybody. I know we sent out the slides, but some people asked where they want it live. Let's see how we'll be actually saying that, just what's written on the screen. So we're going to go ahead and open the prayer, and then Jerry's going to take over after that. And then we'll jump in and we'll take back over. The Lord be with you. Let us pray. A good and gracious God, we thank you so much for the blessing to be your people, to be your church, the Advent Lutheran Church, this faith community, and all of its different expressions of faith. And we ask that your Holy Spirit just be with us, guide us, and lead us as we talk about the future, ministries and the future of what you want us to do here in these communities, Lord. And we ask that your kindness and love and generosity and forgiveness wash over us as we talk, pray, and figure it out together. We pray, listening sons, only in precious name. Amen. I'll let Jerry introduce himself.
Hi, I'm Jerry. So I did become council president back in June of last year, this year, and it just seems like last year. And we have been meeting, the council has been meeting quite often since then. Typically, it's once a month, but we've had so much in our place, we've been meeting more often than. And I promised that after December, I told the council, we will go back to once a month. And I don't think not one of them believed me, so I don't know what to do about that. So we'll go through the agenda, which is, we're going to talk a little bit about the background of how we got where we are. Mission and vision that Pastor Jeremy gave to the council back in August, July. And then talk about staff structure to support the vision, Melbourne Beach Campus Ministry, the current and future state of Advent, and the process of defining and recommending the options that the council went through in order to bring into the congregation this January coming. And then the explanation of those options. And that's really the crux of the whole meeting is the explanation of the options. And hopefully, we can answer any questions that you have, so that in January, we're all informed voters. So first, on the background. And this is not news, we had this out, but just want to make sure everyone had the same baseline. Pastor Jeremy was prepared to launch a detailed planned mission for an outreach to Advent in the current timeframe. And of course, as we know, Pastor Dave had a significant emergency that altered those plans. And then we put Pastor Jeremy in as acting senior pastor. And that was true during most of the year in March. And a decision to cease face-to-face worship due to the pandemic. That's when we really started to see a change in Advent for the year. Worship services in some ministries continued largely through virtual methods. And then contributions to the General Upper East Front began to significantly fall off during that timeframe. As you might guess, folks weren't coming, and they weren't accustomed to any other methods of giving in their contributions. So we started seeing a decline there. And then Advent set, again, hours and reduced expenditures, trying to make up for that loss of income. And they did a fantastic job, can give actually great, oh, enough credit for how hard the staff really. Both campuses started to cut back and make sure that we did our best to prevent the cuts in income. And then November, we started to resume from face-to-face, and we started to get to see people again. It started to be growing. And then, of course, as conditions changed, we allowed that to happen more and more. Which brings us to January 2021. We voted Pastor Jeremy in for longer acting as a senior pastor. And then July, Pastor Jeremy gave us his vision and mission to the council that was elected in June. And then August, we started the whole retreats, the council retreats, trying to start, we have this vision and mission from Pastor Jeremy, and now how does the council think we ought to implement that here at Advent with the Church? So we went through several meetings and lots of discussion in order to come up with the solutions, the potential solutions that we had. And then November 2021, here we are, in the Town Hall meetings. And we've had several, three, five, this will be the sixth one or the fifth one?
Fifth one.
Fifth one and last one. So we are recording this as Pastor Jeremy says, so we'll be able to put that out for those who haven't made any of them available to see them. So we have, bring Pastor Jeremy back up and talk about the mission and vision that he gave to council back in July.
Before we talk about mission and vision, it's good to know that how it works, this is how Advent with the Church. When I became senior pastor, I gave, we have our letter of call, but we also have a job description that we came up with, all that wonderful stuff. So every church does it a little differently. Mostly the ELCA has a senior pastor who sets kind of a vision and mission. They give the vision and vision, they get it from God, obviously through prayer and research and studying what church leadership is doing, what's successful, what's being affected out there. And then you had to come up with this mission and vision, and give it to the council. The council takes it, and they listen to it, they massage it, they tweak it, and then we go out to the congregation. So that's how we've been working here at Advent with the Church for a little while. Other churches work differently, but that's just to let everybody know that's how we've been doing it. So that's why I was asked when I became officially the senior pastor. I was asked to come up with a mission and vision for the next few to five years of Advent with the Church. And that's what I presented to the council, and that's what I'm going to present to you. So everybody knows our mission, we say that we end at every single worship service we have. We are followers of Jesus Christ for the sake of the world. It's a great mission statement. It says who we are, we're disciples, we're followers, you know, who Jesus Christ is to the world. We don't need to change it, it's good. We can get any better than that. People know even pre-COVID, right? You know, when I was in seminary fifteen so years ago, twenty years ago, we were talking about this declining and mainline denominations, especially the ELCA, Methodist Church, you know, the Baptist churches. A lot of churches have been declining over the years in the United States. Majority of Americans now don't even consider themselves a part of any faith community, not even, not just Christian, but not part of any faith community, none of them, as I've talked about before. Not Catholic nuns, but N-O-N-E-S. They have no affiliation whatsoever to any faith community. They may call themselves spiritual or connected to a higher power or nature, but we're not connected to any kind of faith community. And again, we're the ELCA Evangelical Lutheran Church of America. We've been declining for years, just with participation, attendance, and membership. But I always like to look at the, unless my button, so we don't have to forgive you. I'll still be pastor without the button, without the call, I promise. The harvest is plentiful, but the laborers are few. So a lot of the church leaders now, as we talk about growth, as we talk about spreading the good news of Jesus Christ, are talking about, we are more like the first Christians than we've ever been before. Those first century Christians, the ones who followed Jesus, who actually walked with Jesus, you know, spirits, Jesus's death and resurrection, and started meeting in people's homes and being called followers of the ways, what we're called, followers of Jesus. And we're more like that in America than we've ever been before. There are so many people out there who don't know who Jesus is, and they've heard the name, but really don't know the hope, grace, mercy, forgiveness that Jesus has to offer. So that's, that's the good news, that there's a lot of people out there who need to know about who Jesus is. The bad news is the laborers are few, and the even worse news for you is we're the laborers. So we're the few, and it's really hard, especially in Florida, for people who like to come and retire here and say, I've done this my whole life. I was part of, you know, in my twenties and thirties, I was a part of youth group. I helped with that, I did all of that, I came to Florida, so I don't have, so I don't have to do it. But here we are, we're the ones God's calling us to do. Now, we don't have families, we do, but we absolutely need a next generation to help us as well. So the scripture is actually, and this is total coincidence, Pastor Dave gave us all the information that he gave us during the merger of Grace and Advent. And I actually found all the minutes of all those congregation meetings, which if you want to have a good time, get a stack of congregational minutes, and you can read those for a while. And shockingly, and I didn't want to talk to Pastor David on this, he used the exact same scripture, because it's a good one. It's called the Great Commission, right? So back in 28th, 18, Jesus told disciples, "All four yeahs have heard. Therefore, go make disciples, and all raise your hands, and preach to the fathers, and the sons, and the pupils. And teach these new disciples." So they all command, said, "Be sure, that you always give it to the hand of the world." I mean, again, it's what Jesus, the command Jesus gave us before he ascended to heaven, and gives all the disciples. So it's our mission and vision as well. So I hear three things in that scripture. I hear make disciples, I hear teach disciples, and I hear send disciples. So what we ask in ourselves is in our vision, to be followers of Jesus Christ for the sake of the world. How can we be the most influential followers of Jesus Christ for the sake of the world, following the Great Commission? And what is the best way we can share the good news of Jesus Christ to make, teach, and send disciples? So that happened, and I gave my vision. And at that point in time, Pastor Rick was still planning on retiring, he was part-time, still planning on retiring in May. Pastor Dave was trying to figure out what he wanted to do, having some health problems and other things. Around that exact same time, both of them came to me separately, unless they talked to each other and worked it out themselves. But separately, they came to me, and both said they would like to, to pull back a little bit on their responsibilities. So we have, we have that, that's kind of happened. So in January 2022, just a short month away, Pastor Dave is going to go down to one-third time, which he's so preached once every three weeks about the teaching's weekly Bible study. He has on Wednesday nights, it's again during Advent and Lent, he's going to probably do a service during Advent, so a live study. And he's going to help with some of the electronic technology ministries. He's the one who really got the livestream going and the different things, the word for reports that we've been doing. That's been pretty successful, and people have been cheering, so he's going to continue to do some of those ministries. And then January 2022, Pastor Rick will become what's called a contract pastor. That language gets mixed up with some people that don't know what it is, but it sounds like. But basically, he'll be contracting to come and lead and preach the worship service. It's down at Melbourne Beach, meaning the Sunday, normal Sunday, eight-thirty service. And then any special services like Good Friday. I keep on going, that's still me?
Yeah, you're up to it.
So they came to me and said, we want to do this.
Six more pages.
And as I got to thinking, you know, I'm not going to force them to do anything they don't want to do. So basically, we're going down, and we'll see this on the left side, we're going down from two and a half classes to one of the three classes starting in January. So that requires other things that need to happen. So staff structure accomplished, our mission and vision in 2022. And this course, this doesn't talk about the vote yet. This is, this is assuming that whatever happened in the vote either way, this still needs to happen. Well, I continue to stand support for youth and family ministry, ministry director of Youth and Family Ministry, Ms. Joy, I don't know if you've met her yet, but her name fits her very well. She brings a lot of joy, enthusiasm, and youth to a staff. We're going to increase our hours of our contemporary music director, who's Andy Harrington. We're actually doubling his hours, twenty hours, and he's going to be helping doing a couple of things. He's going to help at our nine o'clock contemporary worship service. It's still going to be a contemporary worship service, we're just going to involve more of the generations. It's going to be called past, past, sorry, generational interactive worship service. There's a lot of words, but basically it means it gets everyone involved. It's not, it's not adult worship, where kids can come to be a part of. It's not kids worship, where adults can be a part of. It's worship designed and executed for all ages and for all different types of people. Some people who like to worship, you know, tactically with their hands, some people like to hear their message. Some people are more visual, all that stuff will be, will be done. So we'll have different things to do, different things, and all ages will be involved in this, from leaders to community assistants, to dramas, to music, to be named. And I need a team to make that happen. So Ms. Joy will help me, Andy will help you, and then we'll get a lay team also that's going to be on a regular basis and come up with some of these different ideas. We're also going to create an alternative worship space right here in the Fallsdale Hall during our nine o'clock and our seven o'clock service. Over there on that whiteboard is, is going to be a quiet play area for younger kids. We're going to have the writing tables, chairs, we're going to have this staff, and it's going to be livestreaming the service as the service is happening. We're going to have some cocoa and coffee, and it's a time for, just invite people to see what we do and how we do this. Maybe some families who don't want to be in the worship space with their kids, because they're self-conscious about that. So the kids can kind of do some stuff, adults can, you can talk if you want to talk. You don't have to be truly active in worship, or come closer and be more active in it during communion. I want the pastor to come over here and serve communion, so children's message that will be interactive and active in it, but in a separate place. There's places I've researched, I've done this, and we've done this, I've done this before, previous searches. It's been very, very successful as a way to, just as an easy, comfortable, non-threatening way for people who may have never stepped into a church before, to know how to be and act and how it's all about, right? Our space is amazing, gorgeous, and wonderful, but if you step into that space, you've never been to a church ever before, it can be a little intimidating. So this will help families and other people kind of get into that group. So we're really excited about that. And we're starting that on Christmas, at our seven, our other five, seven, and eleven services here at Central Hall, alternative worship space. And then we're going to enhance our community engagement out there with different things, with the band, and different, also any other creative thing. One thing I should note about Andy, I don't know if you read the advocate, December advocate. Andy has felt the call to ordinate ministry in the ELCA, and he's applied to Luther Seminary, even accepted in Luther Seminary, which is fantastic. That's long-distance learning, he does have to go there two weeks out of the year to do some intensive learning. He also has to be accepted by the Senate, has to okay him for entrance into the ordination track as well. So it's not only seminary, which is the education part, it's also the, there's a candidacy committee that meets, and that meets the first of February. So he's done all the work, he's filled out all the paperwork, it's like twenty-six, thirty pages just to, just to be seen, to be interviewed. And he's done that, and it's looking good, the track is looking good. So he might even be doing more for us, as I'd love for us to be his internship site and be more involved. And people who don't know Andy, he's had one of the kindest hearts, servant's hearts I've ever been of anybody. So what will I focus on, senior pastor, in January first, 2022? I'm taking that day off, and then I'll start on January second. I will continue to set the vision and mission for Advent. I will oversee, help plan, and lead worship, not only here, but with Betsy as well. As we work together with Betsy, we work together with Betty Jo as well, with Andy, and Kathy. People who don't know Kathy Gifford, she is an integral clog in the, that's not the right word, is it? That did not sound right. Sorry, Kathy, if you're watching that, you know how much I'm the clog. We're already starting to play with that. I'm going to oversee pastoral care, this is going to be one of the big, I don't know, right? Right now, Pastor Rick does oversee all the pastoral care of Advent, and he directs myself and Pastor Dave to go do different things. We have a community ministry, which is fantastic, I want to continue that. But I also want to start a lay visitation ministry that's not just giving communion, but it's visiting people in the hospital if they want to be visited, it's visiting people at home. Letting people know that there's someone from Advent that cares about them and that's visiting them. So my goal in early July, early January is to get groups together and get them trained so they can be a part of that lay visitation. Because unfortunately, being the only full-term pastor, that could eat up all my time, it really could. If I'm just visiting people all the time, doing funerals all the time, I'm not going to have much time for anything else. A lay visitation team, community team are going to be a big, big component of that. And I would love at some point in time to resurrect our, our student ministry, which is a fantastic one-on-one ministry, listening ministry as well. One thing I have to add. And then planning on organizing discipleship adult day formation. That's what Pastor Dave was doing, as pastor discipleship worship. So we had some things in the plan for the fall, it didn't quite work out, but we still have little things that are ready to go. Just need to pull the trigger on small groups, you know, kind of a marriage one-on-one, a pairing one-on-one, a Bible one-on-one, those kinds of stuff. Pastor Dave will continue to teach his Bible study. Pastor Rick, and this is so tough, Pastor Rick insists on volunteering to do his Tuesday night Bible study, which we'll continue to do, but it says a volunteer, but not really, but it is. Maybe they're not doing so, which is fantastic, and it helps a lot. And then oversee evangelism, outreach, and community engagement, and that has to be with, with those ministries as well. We're going to have kind of lay people who are going to be a part of each of those teams and help us out until, you know, when and if we decide to make another pastor. And then I lead and supervise the staff as senior pastor. I'll try, I'll try that. All right, this is you, right? Seemed like it was short the last time. So Melbourne Beach campus, so you look at the ministry at Melbourne Beach, what's going on down there. Goal of the merger, again, I was here for a merger, and I read everything that I can, I've talked to the people that were there. I think I have a good idea, but I cannot speak to it firsthand, so do know, I know that I'm speaking to it separately. But most people have told me the goal of the merger was to uphold Christian presence in that community throughout reserving the building property as a church instead of the commercial residential building. They wanted that still be a Christian faith community within that community. We continue to have a very dedicated, faithful group of people that worship on the Melbourne Beach campus, a thirty traditional service, and other services and other initiatives as well. And again, Grace Lutheran Preschool, for those who don't know, is a wonderful preschool there that has continued to grow and be of positive impact in that community. So we have to figure out with COVID and everything else, the merger, anybody, everyone would say that the merger has not turned out the way they expected. Every single person I talked to says that. And so instead, we always have to look at what God is doing. Pastor Rick, I try to catch his sermons as much as I can. He preached for two months of find where God is working and plug yourself into. And he told me he was going to do that, and that's what he wanted to preach out, and I said, that sounds good to me. So that's what we're doing, continue to listen and follow up. That is the Holy Spirit who is God's friend for the Melbourne Beach campus. Our partnership with Rock Harbor has been, in my mind, as I worked with Pastor Kevin as the athleticist, the lesson, because they are doing a lot of the things that we said we wanted to do with the merger and the ministry down there. We continue to share the good news of Jesus Christ, and they've been teaching and sending disciples. They do it different than us, the way we're doing it down there now. They come from Finnish Lutherans, an offshoot of Finnish Lutherans. And their core beliefs are very similar to our core beliefs. They don't like to write down their doctrine too much. Believe it or not, Luther did not want to write down just what doctrine too much. That's why we don't have a systematic theological book of Luther. It wasn't until Philip and Lincoln, his predecessor, the person who came out there, did it, and others, but anyway. So they do have core beliefs, they have six core beliefs, and they line up really well with our beliefs as well. And again, they're crafting the words of all the worded, unique and unexpected ways. No one thought that this was where we're going to be, but I think if we take Pastor Rick's words true, we are truly trying to seek out what God is doing, where God is going, and plugging ourselves into that.
Now you're done.
All right, thank you. So Jerry's going to talk more about the future and then the options.
Thanks, Pastor Jerry. So along with the, what I would call short-term vision, mission, Pastor Jerry, also the, we said three to five, it's kind of notional. It would be as soon as we can get to it, what would be a better description of it. He talked about the vision of making, teaching, and sending disciples, but longer range, in terms of just having a process or a goal, we want to create a culture of the church to be able to do that. So that everything we do is sort of like when you're coming up with a vision for any type of group. When you get ready to take it next to action, does that mean the vision? Is what we're about to go do, is it in the lines of culture of making, teaching, and sending disciples? So that's what we're going to create, that culture. Continue to provide a traditional worship service at Melbourn Beach, that's important. When the council met, and you'll see that when we talk about the options, the council met, we put a list of priorities, or whatever we decided to do to bring forward to the congregation. What was the most important criteria? And believe it or not, financial, it was not the first, it was not the second, but continue to provide a traditional worship service at Melbourn Beach certainly was up in the first two. And continue to focus on youth and family ministry, we believe that the church, as much as I like to attend the traditional, myself, we know the future of the church is not with the boomers, it's with the folks coming behind us. And so we want to continue to focus on that. At the same time, we don't want to abandon us boomers, because we like our traditional services. So support local, national, and global ministry, possibly through a new pastor. We have started, the council has started the very initial pieces of a call. But as many of you know, they have been on a call, that's a long process. And until we get a better definition, stick past the vote in January, we really don't know what that pastor's specific duties are going to turn out to be. So we want to wait for that to happen, and then we'll go, we'll go ahead with that. We do realize, no matter what option we select in January, we will need another full-time pastor, given what Pastor Dave said. Update and fix education, go get Sunbury Campus, getting school back here, as we talked about before, and update the Town Hall for the expanded ministries that Pastor Jeremy went through just a few months ago. So in order to get this vision implemented, we really do need to gain a clear understanding where we're at, short-term and long-term. And then based off that understanding, start making decisions that support the vision, support the mission as we go forward. This is sort of a repeat, this just kind of puts something into the fact that right now, we've got two and a half pastors on staff. Pastor Jeremy full-time, Pastor Dave full-time, Pastor Rick half-time, and there's Pastor David, who's going to send the camera to this team quickly. The campuses, Sunbury, we've got three active services, Saturday and Sunday traditional, and Sunday contemporary. And then Melbourn Beach, we have an active service, of course, down there on Sunday at the right hour of eight-thirty a.m. And we don't want to forget about the preschool. We have a big glowing preschool down there, and certainly that commits as well, and we're happy about that. Membership, steady, but trending downward. And active involvement, members volunteering is also declining. We've seen that since the onset of the pandemic, and we're actually trending downward before the pandemic, but it certainly was amplified during the pandemic. Financials, the General Upper East Front has declined over the last three years and significantly over this past year. There's no question about that decline. The Grace Lutheran Future Plan campaign, as you all remember, we did get pledges of seven-hundred-and-fifty thousand, and two-thirds of that is going to go towards our mortgage debt reduction, so pay down the loan. And a third of that towards ministries and salaries to help the ministries. The giving portion of that campaign ends April next year. We've got about six-hundred thousand collected so far out of the seven-fifty. And we have been paying down, we have split that into two-thirds or one-third, we picked it up there and are paying down those future funds. And then creation of Legacy Fund, I don't know how many of you know that Advent has started the Legacy Fund. Recently, we formed a Legacy Committee, that's chaired by Neil Ivory. We've met several times now, probably three or four months. I'm putting together all the policies and all the rules of how that is going to be governed, how the money will be invested, how it will be dispersed, and they're coming along, I mean, rapidly, I think. I attend those meetings with Pastor Jeremy and the Legacy Committee, and doing well there. So there's a brochure coming out this month, Karen, is that true, something coming out this month? Okay, so I'm going to get it this month, and there'll be a brochure that everyone can take, a colored brochure that you can look at and start understanding how you take, cover brochure, and you can look at and start understanding how you can get engaged and choose to do so.
Karen's going to do some temple talks. You knew that, right?
So come January, one of the one good pastors on staff, Pastor Jeremy will be full-time, as you saw, he only has like part-time job and almost activities. Pastor Dave produces one-third time in January, Pastor Rick will become the contact pastor in January, and, and he's been pretty consistent with the fact that he is retiring in May of 2022. Campuses, we'll still attempt to keep the three active services, Pastor Service will do one-third of the pastor, will fire some of the little staff, we talked about some of that, and inherited going double time from what he's doing now, Betty Jo picking up some of the slack and some of the other things we talked about. Melton Beach, one active service, contact pastor, service, and we talked last night at the town hall that we had in Melton Beach last night, this is the
Yesterday morning.
Yesterday morning, sorry, it seems like last night. Yesterday morning, and we talked about the fact that this, this is initial, we'll be going in here in the contact pastors. As things change throughout 2022 and in the future, we may make other decisions in doing that, but the main goal, we're happy to ensure we keep it mine, if we want to maintain that traditional service down there and the school, at least initially, for Melton Beach campus and the school. Membership, we want to focus on making teaching, sending disciples, and we believe that we will come with a different change from front of make. The intent here is to grow Suntree and make it a growing community. We talked last night, yesterday morning, seems like last night, yesterday morning, the fact that, you know, part of this decision that we're making is that we have realized that we just cannot, we don't have the resources, not just financial resources, but personnel resources and others, to grow both campuses. So we are focused, we're going to focus on growing Suntree campus and making sure that we maintain and preserve that traditional worship down at Melton Beach campus and the school. The financials, we have created, the council has created a 2022 budget, and we have met and thought we were done, we, in the process of going through the analysis that helped support the conversation that we'll have on January ninth, we found an error in our calculations for the budget, so we're back to that. We meet again this fourteenth of December, and we will finish that and then get the budget out for you to start looking at, fire the January ninth vote on the budget. Continue to promote the Legacy Funds, Legacy Funds is some of the future ministry projects, and the vote in January will determine the future financial decisions. So the budget that we put together for 2022 that you'll see in January is independent of the vote on the same day later in the afternoon, it's independent of that, and if that vote happens that we vote to sell the Melton Beach properties, then we will go back and revamp a new budget for 2022 forward. And recognize, even if, even if the congregation votes that we will sell the Melton Beach properties, that won't take place in January, and we'll be lucky if that takes place in September. We have talked to Rock Harbor and said, hey, if we vote in January, what timeline are you on? And they asked the same question, what timeline are we on? And we both agreed that if August, September could happen, that would be great for everyone, so we're going to work towards that kind of a timeline. So we need to adjust the resources of Advent to align our vision and making sure that we can continue to try to provide what Paul talked about on those two slides. So the council got together and utilized rational decision-making tools, and I have found that over the years of trying to make big decisions with groups of people, that the human nature of people in those groups, they want to say, okay, let's get all the options on the table and make a decision. But long before we get options on the table, we need to figure out what's important to us. So the council used a disciplined process here to kind of keep us engaged gradually. So we define in the action, first step is defining what we are trying to solve, define the decision criteria, so what criteria will be used to measure whether or not we're successful in our solutions? And then leave that criteria from one to ten, or one to twenty, or whatever it came up to be, so that we have the most important criteria was our number one, material weight, and then the one that wasn't the least important out of all of them, and not unimportant, but least important out of them would be the least number on that scale, and then everything in the middle comes way higher. At that point, once we have the criteria not only developed and weighted, then we've said we're ready to start talking about options. And we did not want to do what we're, we're good at doing, and that is start dissolving the options before they can even get on the table. So bring every option clearly on the table, even if someone might think it's ridiculous, get it on the table, and let the weighted criteria figure out whether or not it was a good solution. And that's what we did. And we scored those options against the criteria, and once we've done that, we had six, I believe six, help me somebody, six or seven options, and, and the council looked at it and said, okay, we think there's two that probably are worthy of bringing forward because of the way that they meant the criteria. And so the two options we could bring forward is to sell Melton Beach campus, obtain Grace preschool, enter into a rental agreement where we reverse the roles, where we are the tenant, and they're there or ran over, so that we have sanctuary, continue to carry our traditional services there, and then lease the classroom area back, and we continue with Grace preschool. The council did look at options that said, just sell the campus and don't try to continue open truth service there, and don't try to be a school there, but it did not meet the criteria, as I said earlier, financial, that would have been great for the financial criteria all by itself, but it was the third one on the list, and was nearly as important to this. So just trying to give you an idea of what a conversation that we went through, and it wasn't a five-minute conversation, in fact, it was an all-day conversation, and thank goodness the council didn't wish that they stayed. Keep our Melton Beach campus in real life, this is the second option, keep our Melton Beach campus, and realign our staff and resources to fit with the current forecast and keep it within the budget. So we called that in our original conversation, the council called that status quo, and that would be where you were trying to continue with what we've been trying to do, which is grow both campuses, but that was the second option. Some considerations around those options. Rock Harbor was very interested in purchasing Melton Beach campus, they made that very clear to both Pastor Rick and Pastor Jeremy. In fact, in our initial town hall meeting that we had at Melton Beach campus, Pastor Kevin from Rock Harbor spoke and tried to give his side of the story about what he's interested in, it was a very compelling conversation. As we've talked about, you know, we wanted to grow the church down there, we wanted to bring in young families, we thought we could get that preschool moving down there, that we could bring families in. We got the preschool moving, we didn't bring the families in, and there's lots of reasons we've talked about why that happened, I'm not sure everybody would know exactly, and would be correct what their opinion was, but we do know that Rock Harbor has the recipe, if you will, and is doing great work down there. And so by enabling them for the campus, they can continue to grow, we think that's doing God's work. Rock Harbor is willing to lease the facilities back there, so Pastor Diamond has made that clear, not only to us, but also to the Melton Beach congregation, that is its intent, there would be no question about that going forward. And that's like we were just talking, and that's just amazing, just be able to afford to continue to do the preschool, and help the last team down there. Sell Melton Beach, with selling Melton Beach campus, we, we, the Advent will pay up its mortgage, and therefore make substantial reduction in its operating expenses, which is one of our criteria, promote our sustainability, criteria number three. Advent will be able to adjust necessary improvements to better align our vision, so with the additional funds, with the additional approach, with the additional creativeness that we've talked about, with the interactive services and other things, we believe that we can accomplish God's teaching of the church. Key to Melton Beach, considerations around that, the message of the gates of existing Melton Beach community, which is key to our criteria, we'll continue Grace preschool, which is also key to the criteria, and what we recognize here is that non-technical support Rock Harbor's progress. So when I first put these charts together, I used your words, I said, instead of support that to impede, and, and believe me, that was not well received, and it shouldn't have been, because it was a poor choice of words on my part. So we'll affect and support, and we just talked about that, they are a growing church, they will continue to grow, and by us helping them with the facility to do so, we believe we're adding to God's community in Melton Beach. Pretty guaranteed, questions will come up, and so if you have questions, don't hesitate to get it to myself or Pastor Jeremy or any member of the council, or if there are not questions, if you want to say, hey, can we follow this, have a thought of that. I can't overemphasize the council's meetings of how involved the engagement was, of all the different options we talked about, and how much we belated each option. It was quite a conversation, and I felt that a lot of people there negotiating for all the different sides and every argument we came up with, but did a good job of coming together, the people, and say, here it is.
And I would also say, talk to your fellow worshippers, the people that, that there's a lot of rumors out there of what this is going to be and not going to be, there's a lot of words that people use that mean one thing, it'll be another. The reason we used the word mergers is because that's the Senate told us we had to be, but, you know, all that kind of stuff. So please, tell, talk to people of what you heard here, so they have a good idea, you know, tell them about the videos, so they can listen to it firsthand, too. We sent out the slides, but that's a lot of words on the page, but the more and more people that are engaged, the more people know, the better informed the decision is going to be in January.
And I just want to add one more comment, because it came up in the, in the Melton Beach meeting Sunday morning up there, was that, you know, we have an email list that every week emails go out from the church, and it was surprising to me that there's folks who weren't getting those emails. So if you're not getting an email every single week from Advent Luther, you're somehow falling off a list that you need to get back on, so
If you want.
If you want to, yes.
We're not forcing you, mandatory.
If you want to, and recently, recently you might want to, so if some of this stuff happens, you'll know what's going on, but, but if you're not on that list, for some reason, follow the sermon and get on the list, and as I said the other day, having any group of any size that has a mailing list, it will always be wrong, so keep updating.
The last thing I'm going to say is, you know, this is our fifth presentation, and we've been discussing this internally, myself, since, you know, for quite a while, the council quite a while. We might not show the emotion at this time, at this place, but we recognize how hard of a decision and conversation this is. I, I don't want to be up here having to offer up these options, I really don't. This is not where I envisioned, it's not where I thought I would be as a pastor, for that sake, when I came here just over three years ago as an associate pastor, but this is where God placed me, and I think we are trying to do our best to make the best decision to get the information out to the people at Advent, where people at Advent can make the decision, and, and they, and you will make the decision, we'll make the decision together, whatever decision it is, and we'll move forward with that decision. But know that we understand, I understand very much, the pain, the sadness, the loss, the weeping that happened to something like this if this is decided. It's not easy, it's not easy decisions, and I do believe God is with us, and God cries with us and weeps with us as well. We'll celebrate ministry, we'll do all that stuff, but at the same time, it is a loss if that's what's going to happen, and we have to be aware of that, and we have to talk about it, and we'll be okay with it, and put it in God's hands. So it's, it's not easy, and we know it's not easy, and I appreciate everyone who's come and expressed their thoughts and comments about it. So listen, the Lord be with you. Oh gracious God, we thank you for this, another great meeting, talking about your future vision and mission here at Advent. We ask how we take this and let the Holy Spirit march over us and come back, go home, to think about it, to pray about it, so we can make the best decision we can for your church and your future. And we know that you will work through every situation, no matter what decisions we make, and no matter how many times we fall and lower, and don't reach the expectations you have for us, since we're sinful humans, but we know that you will forgive us, you will love us, and you'll always be with us in this journey to the end of the world, as you said, through our Lord and Savior Jesus Christ. We pray the song of your sons only, and our sisters. Amen. All right, thank you, everybody.